Good afternoon and welcome to the June regular meeting of the Calgary Police Commission. I call this meeting to order and ask that everyone ensure your microphones are muted until you need to speak. My name is Sean Cornet and I am Chair of the Commission. I'm joined today by Commissioners Amtil Siddiqui, Susan Mullen, Heather Campbell, Cherie Neisen Jordan, TJ Tsang, Kelly Ogle, Samuel Hope, Robert Tange, Ayo Ididran, and Councillors Jennifer Weiness and Terry Wong. Today's Calgary Police Service representatives are led by Chief Constable Mark Newfeld. Superintendent Smart, would you please introduce those you expect to speak during today's meeting?
Yes, Chair, thank you for having us. So, good afternoon, Chair, Councillors. My name's Claire Smart, I'm the Superintendent and Executive Officer to Chief Newfeld. I have the pleasure of introducing our executive leadership team. So, to my far right, we have Director Michael Nunn of Strategic Communications Section, Acting Executive Director Tricia Spadman of the Finance Division, Executive Director Catherine Murphy, Legal and Regulatory Services Division, Chief People Officer Kim Armstrong, Bureau of People and Organizational Development, Deputy Chief Raj Gill, Bureau of Community Policing, Deputy Chief Paul Cook, Bureau of Investigative Support, Chief Constable Mark Newfeld, Deputy Chief Chad Toffick of the Bureau of Organizational Performance, and probably Deputy Chief Katie McClellan of the Bureau of Service and Community Support will be joining us shortly. I would also like to introduce Inspector John Spans, who is from the RCMP in Wautasquon. He is here with Deputy Chief Toffick on the ACP mentorship program.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for being here. For those not familiar with our role, our commission is a body of ten community members and two city councillors appointed by City Council and the Government of Alberta. We provide independent citizen governance and oversight of the Calgary Police Service on behalf of all Calgarians. To protect the political neutrality of the police, Alberta's Police Act requires that the police chief report directly to us instead of elected officials. We provide direction to the police through the chief, police policies, monitoring the police complaint process, and approval of how the police budget is spent. Today is one of eight regular meetings we have each year to openly discuss police governance and oversight matters with the service's leadership and to hear from the public. We also have several private monthly committee meetings where commissioners work more directly with the service on various matters that cannot be discussed publicly. I would now turn to our Indigenous nations' acknowledgement. Our commission is meeting today on the ancestral and traditional territory of the Blackfoot Confederacy, made up of the Sxixika, Begani, Omskabe-Begani, Gynai First Nations. It is also home to the Iathka-Nakota-Wiskatapi First Nations comprised of the Chiniki, Berespa, and Good Stony First Nations, as well as Tsutsina First Nation. These are the people who made a treaty with the Crown, forming Treaty VII Territory. Calgary is also homeland to the historic Northwest Métis and to Métis Nation of Alberta. Our commission is committed to doing our part to address the inequity and intergenerational trauma caused by past and current wrongs, to support reconciliation with all Indigenous people who share this land with us. Our commission also condemns racism and prejudice in all forms and is committed to being anti-racist. We stand in solidarity with all Calgarians who are Black, Indigenous, or other people of colour. As we start our meeting, allow me to provide a brief overview of the format for those joining us for the first time. The public session of this meeting is being livestreamed, and recording will be posted online so we can make it available to those unable to attend. There will be several presentations from the Calgary Police Service, commission members, and commission staff. Commissioners will have the chance to ask questions or make comments after each one. Once we've completed the presentations, we'll move to the public participation portion of the meeting. Those who are registered to speak will then be called on by name and will have a chance to either ask a question or make a presentation for our consideration. Following the public participation, we will close the public meeting with the chief and I taking questions from the media. Everyone is welcome to observe the media availability, but only media professionals can participate. To start our meeting, I will now ask for approval of the agenda. Does any member of the commission wish to request an amendment to the agenda? Seeing no such requests, I will now call for declarations of pecuniary interest or conflict of interest from the commissioners. Hearing and seeing none, I will now ask for approval of the consent agenda. For those viewing today's meeting, the consent agenda is a list of routine items and reports that all commissioners agree can be accepted without more discussion or a separate vote. Does any member of the commission wish to request an item on the consent agenda be brought forward for discussion? Hearing and seeing no such requests, I declare both the agenda and the consent agenda approved as presented. And now Agenda Item 4, which is the Chair's Report. Our commission attended a few ceremonies through the month of June, including Youthlink's dedication of a new display on Calgary's Victim Assistance Program, graduations for a new police service horse and new police service dogs, and a graduation for experienced police officers who've made Calgary their new home. It's exciting to see experienced officers join our community, and I want to welcome them to Calgary one more time. A group of commissioners also attended a banquet celebrating members of the service who've recently been promoted. Congratulations to everyone who was recognised, and thank you for letting us celebrate with you. Our commission was also invited this month to present our approach to employee surveys at the Ontario Association of Police Service Board's Spring Conference. Calgary is a leader when it comes to police employee surveys, and it was nice to be able to share some of our learnings with our peers in Ontario. On the training side, our commission completed an anti-racism course earlier in June. The session was a great opportunity to challenge our own unconscious biases and learn from one another's lived experiences. Finally, our commission has been busy meeting with other levels of the government to help ensure a coordinated approach to the policing issues in our community. We presented our commission's annual report to council last week and have had several meetings with provincial government on the work underway to establish the Police Review Commission and review the use of photo radar enforcement. As always, I want to conclude my report by recognising a few of the ways that members of the Calgary Police Service have delivered on the priorities of Calgarians. Investigators had a big month in drug trafficking enforcement. In three high-profile cases alone, almost 100 charges were laid against eight individuals. These efforts are helping to address the drug traffic in trade in our public spaces and our community, and we want to thank everyone who worked on these cases. At the end of May, patrol officers were quick to connect two random attacks at local malls. Their skill and professionalism resulted in a suspect being arrested while trying to flee the second scene, preventing any further violence. Investigators were also able, with the public's help, to identify and charge a woman following a hate-motivated attack outside the central public library. The work shows the seriousness with which the service takes these incidents, and we appreciate it greatly. Finally, the service has been busy engaging with the community this past month. Officers have attended Pride events, Eid events, Indigenous events, and other special occasions that matter to people in our community. Several Coffee With A Uniform events have also been held to allow people to connect with the officers that work in their neighbourhood. In District 3, this has been done using a mobile community engagement vehicle that can connect with Calgarians in places that people are gathering anywhere. I know these examples are just a few of the many things that officers and civilian members of the service have done to support our community. On behalf of our commission, I want to thank all of you for your hard work throughout June. With that, I'll conclude my Chair's Report and will now move to our presentations from the Calgary Police Service. The first item we'll be discussing today is the service's ongoing work to improve the safety of public spaces. With that introduction, I will now turn it over to Chief Newfeld to begin the presentation.
Thank you, Chair Cornet. 5.1 will be Safe Public Spaces, and I'll just turn it over to Deputy Chief Gill for a quick introduction.
Good afternoon, everybody. The presentation you're about to hear is about the Safe Public Spaces systems approach that the Calgary Police Service and the City of Calgary have jointly been working on. Just as a bit of background, the Safe Public Spaces action plan was introduced in March of 2023 to create safe public spaces, including on transit, by taking action to reduce crime and social disorder through focused collaborative enforcement and compassionate supports. Since then, many initiatives have come together to support the work, including the Joint Management Team with partners at the City of Calgary, the development of High System Users approach to enforcement, partnership with Alberta Crown Prosecution Services for the Urban Crime Initiative, and the rollout of the Community Engagement Response Teams. This presentation will provide the Calgary Police Commission with an update on how the Calgary Police Service is partnering through systems approaches to address crime and social disorder in our public spaces. So with that, I'd like to introduce you to our two presenters. First is Kay Choi, who is a manager of Service Excellence for Community Services at the City of Calgary, and Superintendent Cliff O'Brien, who is the superintendent in charge of North District Policing in the City of Calgary. Cliff?
Thanks, Deputy, thanks, Chief, thanks, Chair. I'll start off with, do we have the presentation? I'll start off with, just to reiterate a little bit and to cast our minds back to the spring of 2023, and we heard loud and clear from our community at that time that they were not feeling safe in many of our public spaces, including our transit stations, including our transit locations. We did, as many of the districts around this city, we would do operations, we would make arrests, but we still were hearing from our community that they were still feeling very unsafe. We did talk to our transit peace officers, and notwithstanding the fact the City Council had approved growth for them, it was still going to take some time to train those peace officers. It was also going to take some time to, well, to hire and then train those peace officers. Next slide, please. With support from the chief and this executive, Superintendent Boyd, who's my counterpart in the South, and I, along with our commanders in the eight districts, got our members together and said that we need to help support our transit peace officers, our partners. And we, again, began doing operations, we began making arrests. One of the things that we noticed is, although our focus was very much on behaviour, that that behaviour, as you would imagine, would move from one LRT leg to another, or from one public space to another public space. So we developed the Safe Public Spaces Action Plan. We still wanted our members to go out and lead with compassion, police with compassion. There was an opportunity to have somebody that was causing behavioural issues in a public space to get them out of whatever the issue was that brought them there, if it was homelessness, if it was mental health or addiction. We wanted to work with partners to do that, but we had to be the police. Part of that meant that we were visible, and it also meant that the people that we were interacting with, that sometimes we were writing summonses, sometimes we were doing officer contacts to track those individuals. Next slide, please, Amber. We also realised that we couldn't do it alone within the districts, that we certainly needed support from other people from around and other units from around the service. And you can see there just a little bit of some of the units that we relied on. We did notice some displacement of the problems, some of the problem behaviour moved along, and we knew that we had to be coordinated within the police service on what we did. And so we did that coordination piece internally. But as we were doing that, we also recognised that we needed some coordination externally as well. We needed some coordination with our city partners, and so we developed the Joint Management Team, and I'll turn it over to Kay for the next part. Next slide.
Thanks, Cliff. Chair Cornet, members of commission and police executive, I am pleased to be here to share an overview of how the City of Calgary, how the City of Calgary, thanks, partners with the Calgary Police Service and how we work together to enhance safety for all Calgarians. I am grateful for the Calgary Police Service's dedication and willingness to strengthen our impact on issues that matter to Calgarians. Community safety and wellbeing is a shared responsibility. It requires a collective response, and we are taking action. The Joint Management Team is comprised of almost 40 subject matter experts from across 11 service lines. The team coordinates operational plans, collaborate on outreach opportunities, and we respond at the speed of the issue. Our North Star is to advance the vision of a Calgary where everyone feels safe, connected, and supported. We are moving with purpose to address safety concerns, to improve real and perceived safety by focusing on three key outcomes. Calgarians will see a city that supports the needs of those at risk. Calgarians will see welcoming public spaces. And Calgarians will see a safer city. Although the team is still in a state of infancy, early indication is that this collective approach is working. Calls for service and crime on transit is down compared to the same time last year. Total calls for service declined by almost 50%. And according to a recent perspective survey, Calgarians say they feel safer now than they did six months ago. Seventy-three percent of Calgarians think that Calgary is safe. Eighty-seven percent of Calgarians feel that Calgary is safe, safer or safe as other major Canadian municipalities. While this is encouraging, we are moving the needle on real and perceived safety. We recognise, though, we still have a long way to go. We will continue to act with urgency to improve community safety and wellbeing outcomes for Calgarians. Community safety and wellbeing is a priority, and we are deeply committed to addressing issues related to public safety in collaboration with our key partners in the Calgary Police Service. Now, I'm going to hand it back to Cliff.
Thanks, Kay. This slide might look familiar to commission members. This was one that you would have seen when Tam Dacku had presented here and talked about the toolkit, the officer toolkit that we had. Part of what we wanted to do is track some of the people that we were having behavioural problems with. I could tell you that between January and October 2023, we had interactions specific to transit and public safe spaces with over 3,300 unique individuals. Ninety-five percent of them were adults, 5% were youth. What was remarkable is that 92% of those people that we were dealing with had two to five interactions with uniformed members, either police or transit peace officers. What we started to realise, though, is that 25 of those individuals had over 14 interactions, and for a couple of those individuals, we had, between transit peace officers and police, we had four to five interactions a day with these individuals. So, notwithstanding that they may have received a summons, or they may have, there'd been some other tracking of them, we weren't making any difference in those individuals and the impact they had on community safety, other perception of community safety. You will remember, commission members, that there was a particular individual that was highlighted for you, and that particular individual had, over a five-year period, had almost 200 various interactions with police and transit peace officers. At the same time that this was taking place in the fall of, just the next slide, please, Amber, in the fall, the Calgary Office of the Alberta Crown Prosecutor's Office approached us to work together on downtown and transit-related safety and how we could work together in that. That led to Deputy Chief Prosecutor Travis Stang from the Calgary Prosecutions Office becoming lead and working with us to bring together a diverse group of people to look for solutions with these, what we would call them, high systems users. This group includes, as you heard, Crown, probation, police, mental health officials, municipal legal services. And what we were able to do was pilot the top 25 high systems users that we saw within our, specific to our transit systems. We also took some individuals that we could tell were starting to really escalate in some of their violence, and so we were able to flag those individuals for the Crown Prosecutors so that if they came across their desk, they were able to take a look at, can we use the legal system to somehow get them some help? So whether that be with conditions, whether that be reporting conditions, but what can we do to actually try to help and break the cycle that we were seeing? We're often seeing people that were being charged criminally, they were pleading guilty, and it was, they were, time served, and they were out right away, so there was really no impact. So far, with the Urban Crime Initiative, what we're seeing is that we're seeing that there has been a difference, we are seeing a difference. That particular individual that we had referred to a few months back was arrested. That individual had spent 140 days in custody. Now, spending time in custody isn't necessarily the solution, but what does happen is, and what our hope is, is that stabilises that individual. Not only does it stabilise them in custody, but allows them to get some assistance. In this particular case, this individual was able to have a health assessment done, and they were released, and when they were released, not that we expect everything to be perfect, but when they were released, it was another 10 days before they had re-offended. And just to remind you that this was somebody that we were dealing with three to five times a day prior to that, so. Next slide, please. Because we knew about the high systems users and we had partners at the table, as you know, we launched in April of this year the first four of our eight Calgary Police Community Engagement Response Teams, or CERT, I mentioned that last month, and this is a result of the Government of Alberta's funding for the 50 dedicated positions, and we've given them a mandate to reduce crime and social disorder in public spaces, which includes downtown and on transit. We also have a high systems user coordinator that's embedded in each one of those teams, and they are monitoring our high systems users, which have been identified. And again, we're partnering with prosecutors, we're partnering with health and social supports to reduce those interactions with enforcement. We anticipate that in September, we will have another four CERT teams, so that every district will have one. And I would say that, again, you can see here from the slide, that we have had some successes. They are highly visible, and that's very purposeful. Next slide, please. So I think it's evident to us that between all of these systems that are working together, including the Urban Crime Initiative with our Crown, including our CERT teams, that we're already seeing some reductions in interactions with some key people when it comes to police resources as well as transit resources. The high systems users, again, sometimes we have increased custody times for that stabilisation period, but we're also seeing some reduced workload before the courts by, you know, the idea is to get people the help that they need and to lead with compassion. You will be hearing in the future, and I think it actually started today, but as a result of this work that's gone on, that we're going to have a community court here in Calgary. The community court is going to be looking at some of these high systems users when it comes to municipal offences and bylaw tickets, in other words, and how can we get help to those individuals so that it's not a continuous challenge for not only the police and transit, but also for our community that are in those public spaces? And I'll take questions if you have them, thank you.
Thank you very much for that report. We'll turn it over to Commissioners for questions. Have Commissioner Wong, and then Neisen Jordan, Siddiqui, thanks.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you, Ms. Choi. The first question I have is, the statistics you quoted, the statistics are a period in time, not for today, but perhaps you can send the commission the before and after sources statistics so we can see what the trends are looking like, if that's possible? Okay. The second question is, when you put up your chart on the Joint Management Team, and in there you talk about engagement and advocacy, and a question I've got there is, when we talk about communities and, I would say, business associations and this and that, how are they engaged with the Joint Management Team? Thank you.
Through the Chair, Commissioner Wong, thanks for the ques- he's so much taller than I am. Thanks for the question, Commissioner Wong. So I think I heard a twofold question. So yes, the numbers that I quoted you were a point in time, and so the most recent perspective survey was, I believe, in May of 2024, and I'm happy to share the trend lines. We've had a slight improvement over the last six months. However, it is still not up to pre-pandemic numbers. And so what we want to do, and what the numbers are telling us, is that the approaches, our system approaches are working because we've got that slight decline, and it's maintaining those numbers, which I'm really encouraged about, and hopefully this is going to be the foundation for us moving or improving on those numbers. I think the second part of your question was, how are we engaging with the community? That Joint Management Team, we have 40 subject matter experts across 11 service lines, and so we've got, you know, participants who work very closely with the community, we've got members who work very closely with our business improvement areas, and we want to continue that collaboration, continue that information sharing, and that's, I think, how we make these nimble choices and how we move at the pace of the issue. And so, yes, we will continue to engage with the community, we continue to engage with the businesses, because until everyone feels supported, connected, and safe, our work isn't done with a JMT.
Thank you, that, okay. The engagement with communities offices is very important because they see what's outside their front door, they see what their staff are hearing when they come in the doors. Having indicators that you've got, presenting them regularly will give them that continuing, sustainable understanding of where that's going. The second follow-up question to that is, well, you have advocates out there, and I want to say advocates, certainly 15 members of council are advocates, commission members are advocates. Question is, where's our role engaging in that, short of the eight meetings we have here?
Thanks for the question, Commissioner Wong. How can you help? I think with the investments of council and the investments of this police commission, we couldn't have done this without the investments that have been previously made. I think for that continued support, one of the other things that I'm doing is, we're doing like drilled-down focus groups, and so we're meeting with individuals, because I need to have a better understanding of perceptions of safety. There is no point in me sitting there and saying that 50% of the calls for service are going down. I need to understand a little bit more of why people feel unsafe. And so we just launched several focus groups on that. I'm hoping to get a detailed report later on in June or even in July on that, but these are the two key takeaways that I took away from sitting in on those focus groups. Number one, Calgarians that participated in the focus groups, they told me that they weren't hearing enough from administration, from the Calgary Police Service, or even members of council and commission. They want to know about some of these really good news stories. That is important. And so that is something that I know that we can take away. Number two, though, is a little bit tricky, because what we heard from Calgarians that were saying, "I don't know, Kay," is, "I don't trust you, I don't believe you, that the numbers are declining." Now that's tricky. And so I don't have any mitigating strategies for that. That is something that we're going to try to crack that nut on, and once I find out the answer, we'll be having some more conversations, Commissioner Wong.
Thank you, and just one last question, and Superintendent, I'll talk about East Village in particular, and we know we've got different sort of issues in East Village. No matter how many times I go out there and talk to the people in East Village, that, you know, and I do ride-alongs with you, this is what's been done, this is what's been done. But yet people in the condo buildings are looking down and say, "Yeah, we see the people there," both in terms of police and bylaw and LRT and so on and so forth, "we see you there, but we don't see something being happening, something, you know." And that tangible visual difference is what's missing to Kay's point, you know? Having that perception become reality is what's important for us. I'm not sure if you want to address that one, thank you. Last question, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I would say that one of the things that we've seen when we go and talk to community is that they believe that when the police show up, we're just going to take people away. And that isn't generally the case. Again, we're looking at the behaviour, we're looking at what the behaviour is, what are our grounds, there's a lot, and so I think there's an opportunity there for all of us to educate our community around what police authorities are. And again, you know, I know this has been discussed before, but there are people that have mental health and addiction issues, and they need help, and, you know, sometimes that help, we're there talking to people and we're doing our best to give that help, but that doesn't necessarily mean they're seeing us haul somebody away in handcuffs.
Chief Newfeld?
Thank you, Chair. Just to Commissioner Wong's point-
Just to Councilor Wong's point, one of the things that I think is going to be helpful out of this initiative with the CERT teams and with the coordination between the other city areas and business lines, I think will be exactly what you talked about. What, when we have sustained and coordinated efforts in those public spaces, what are the problems that we're not able to have an impact on? So who are the people, that people in East Village keep looking down and seeing, you know, if you have people that are not compliant, not willing to accept services? And so I think it's, there's the existing suite of options that we have now, but I think looking at what we can't impact is what we need to bring back to whatever layer of government, to say, "How can we build something new here?" Because I think the environment's changed post-COVID. I think we would all agree, we're probably not, I hope we do go back to the way it was, but there are far more issues than there were before, and they're far more prevalent on the streets. So I do think, like, community courts is another one. Like, that could be a game changer, if it operates the way that I would hope that it would. So I think all of these, the work that's being done and the sustained work out there, gives us an opportunity to communicate with community about what are we not able to influence, and then how do we change the system so that we can influence it?
Thank you. Commissioner Sidiki.
You can't reach the microphone, and I can't reach mine either. Thank you so much for your report. I have just a couple of questions, and sort of continuing Commissioner Wong's train of thought. So when you gave the stats, Ms. Choi, they're impressive, like, they are changing, which is great. How will you share that with the community? And I know you've talked about focus groups, but is there something that can be put out at a regular basis, even like an infographic, to say, "Here's what we're doing, and here's how things are changing"? And what's the timing on that?
Yeah, thanks very much for the question. And so, in November, I was appointed as the corporate lead for community safety and wellbeing. And what I did immediately was, I convened leaders from across the corporation and invited our partners in the Calgary Police Service, and I came up with the 30, 60, 90-day plan. And so part of that was to be that one, single source of truth, have community indicators and metrics, have it consistent, and having it reported regularly. And so what we have been doing, and I think it was the second iteration that we have, is we actually have metrics that we've posted on calgary.ca on community safety and wellbeing. It has social disorder numbers, it has calls to 2-on-1, the top 10 calls to 2-on-1, because I think what's really important is to measure, like, indicators, so community indicators, but what, things that matter, and how we're going to be influencing or impacting that change. And so, yes, we are, what we want to do is evolve it. I'm hoping that we can get, you know, support from the Calgary Police Service and the police commission to data-share that information, and that is what I'm hopeful. What I can also tell you is that, you know, we met as a steering committee for the first time yesterday, and that was something that we brought forward. We've got some good measures, but let's make it great, and let's have everyone's measures together, and that includes the city, the Calgary Police Service, Calgary Homeless Foundation, and even our progress on the Home Is Here, our Calgary's home strategy.
Thanks. I would hope that, I know you want to get to "great," which is fantastic, but I hope you would start sharing things sooner than later, just because it's such an important topic that every quadrant is talking about. This is not just a downtown issue. And then the other question, I have two more questions, quickly. One, the focus groups. How did you decide who's in the focus group, or how did you pick those, and are they across the city, or are they just focused in one area?
Yeah, thanks for the question. It was, we had a consultant or an external contractor that helped us with the focus groups. We had it representing each quadrant of the city, and one specific for downtown. We made sure that we had representation, and adequate representation, and hoping that that was truly the voice of Calgarians. I think going back to, you know, why do Calgarians believe that the city is less safe? And I have to tell you, I mean, we're facing rising rates of mental health and addiction, including elevated, you know, elevated drug poisonings. And I think going back to also the question about how can we support, I need for us to continue investment in the city's mental health and addiction strategy. I need for them to be continued investment and continued amplification of our Home Is Here housing strategy. Commissioner Campbell, in a meeting not too long ago, said, you know, "I got to tell you, Kay, the issues that we're seeing right now is a homeless issue." And that resonated with me, and that is something that I am hoping that this commission and our council can continue to amplify.
And so that leads into my last question. It was around resourcing. And so how is the resourcing set right now? Is it predominantly from the service, or is it sort of split equitably? And when you ask for more resourcing, what would that mean from commission and service specifically? What areas are you looking for more resourcing in? Thank you.
Thank you for that question. I don't know if I can adequately answer that question right now, and this is the reason why, is, you know, a few short months into this, it really was discovering and trying to figure out what, if there's any gaps that existed. And I have to tell you, our partners in the Calgary Police Service, city administration, each one of our 11 service lines are doing amazing work. And so I have not yet to identify any gaps. It is an equal partnership between us and the Calgary Police Service when it comes to moving the needle on safety, and you will be the second to hear if we need resources, I promise you.
Commissioner Campbell, and then Commissioner Tangi.
Thanks very much, and appreciate that, Ms. Choi. I know for commission, before they came to this meeting as an addition to their preparation, many of them had the opportunity to read the report called "No Place to Go," which was wonderfully supported by CPS, and we thank you for that. But it really comes down to, yeah, you ride transit all day because it's safer than sitting on a street corner if you're unhoused. So my question really speaks to the lines of perception of safety, and I want to think it was 2022, or maybe even 2023, we had an offline conversation about folks not feeling safe in Olympic Plaza because a group of black men were gathering, dancing, playing music, and speaking loudly. In my family, that's actually not a threat, that's a party. So how do we shift our cultural understanding to know what's a safety problem and what's not a problem in Calgary's population, so that as a set of 1.7 million people, we're not all overpoliced?
Commissioner Campbell, thank you for the question and for the support. The vibrant community's Calgary report was sobering, and something that we, city administration and the Calgary Police Service took very seriously, and we will continue to take very seriously and move the needle on safety. I think, gosh, I think I forgot your second question now, because I was leading up to it.
How do we stop shutting down, like, really good parties?
Ah, thank you. I was aware of that situation, and what I can tell you is, is that one of the service lines of our 11 services that comprise the joint management team is our anti-racism program, and we have the specialist or the leader for public safety on that team. And I have to tell you, he regularly calls me up and says, "Hey, have you considered, or have you thought of?" And we take his advice and the direction of our city on being an anti-racist city very seriously.
If I could, Commissioner, the...
Absolutely, please.
The other thing that we did was, we had to remind people that it's about behavior that is illegal. And so it just, it took some education, I would think. And I think for some of the individuals that were working down in that area, they felt unsafe, but it was around perception. And so it did take a little bit of time for us to talk about that. I can tell you that going forward into the summer, this summer, the Calgary Police Service, people from District 1 actually met as part of their training to talk about behavior, what's illegal and whatnot. So when is the right time to call us or call bylaw? So we haven't, we haven't seen those kinds of issues so far this year, which is a good sign.
Thanks very much, both of you. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Tangi.
Thank you. Thanks for the report, and, you know, we can talk about housing, and we'll get to that, because I think it's really important. I'm curious about the four prolific offenders, one with 12 warrants, one with 13 warrants. Where are they now?
It's a great question. I don't have an answer. I'd have to go back and see if they were released or not. One of the things with the Urban Crime Initiative and having the Crown label, if you will, those high systems users, the advantage that they are seeing is that we are giving them full show causes, so it's not just about the one or two offenses that were committed, it's about everything that has gone on the last year, including things, including behavior that may not be illegal but is troubling, or behavior that our transit peace officers or police officers have found, or the conversation that's taken place where somebody has indicated what some of their problems are, or the fact that "I have no intention to ever stay at a shelter." Those are all important pieces of information the Crown is finding when they are dealing with those particular individuals.
So I guess, you know, the reason I ask that question is, you know, no matter how much intervention we do at the street level, if we don't have systemic change, then it means nothing. It just means officers doing the same thing over and over again, and getting the same results, which is that person's just straight back on the street again. So is there been a change where high offenders are now expected to be in remand longer, or are there sentencing, expecting them to be, or even into treatment or housing or something? Has anything like that changed with this process?
It has. So with those high systems users that we were seeing, with them being flagged, if you will, through the Crown Prosecutor's Office, somebody that had had many, many interactions with community, as well as with police and transit, in the past, when they committed a relatively minor offense, I would say that the courts looked at just that offense by itself. Now with the cooperation we have with the Crown Prosecutor's Office in looking at these high systems users, they're looking at everything that's gone on, not just this one offense. What we're seeing is that sometimes there are release conditions that would be more impactful to get help, sometimes they're not. So sometimes what it is, as I indicated, for this particular high systems individual that we had, she was kept in custody for 140 days. During that time, she was able to stabilize and get some additional assistance. Now, what assistance that is, they don't share with the police, nor should they, but we know that certainly when she came out, there was at least a longer period of time before she re-offended. I don't, there's no, I would say it took us a long time to get here, and I don't think there's a quick fix, but the fact that we're all working together is something that I think is very important. And to have Deputy Chief Prosecutor Travis staying and his team on this and working with us regularly is a very, very important part of this.
So I just worry that what's going to happen is that if we keep someone in remand longer, they don't end up in corrections, or maybe they go into corrections. If we're not doing much, then they re-offend, and then they're back in the pathway, so we'll see a nice little blip where we collect a lot of the high offenders, only for them to end up re-offending, because we're not doing any rehab, or we're not doing any work, or, you know, they're probably struggling with housing and other issues that many of us are seeing. And, you know, so that's always a concern, is when we're looking at data, we can't just look at a specific point, but rather we got to look at long-term. And when we start talking about data, we actually see in May, according to the data that's being shared, assault is up, assault with a weapon is up, personal robbery is up. So when we try to say, "We want commission to come out and say great stories," I don't think I can do that based on a point prevalence, and really that point prevalence is number, not data. So it's not even telling us that it's up or down or anything, it's just simple numbers. And if we don't fix the housing issue, which is a city issue, so hopefully that's something that's happening, and we don't have, you know, a place for someone to safely go, other than transit, as Commissioner Campbell clearly stated and has been reported on several times, how are we actually going to get out of this, other than running around, doing all this excellent work, only to know above us, the system isn't changing? Are we worried that we're just wasting our time here?
Maybe I can jump in, because I think those are excellent points, and I think that we do, as commission and the service, continue to try and push the systemic changes that need to happen, and I think that's what we're all doing and here for. But I think with respect to this particular program, it's at least a step forward in the right direction, but we also have all the rest of the work that we need to do, I think, between commission, council, the service, the other partners in the city. I think there's a lot of work still to be done, but those are very, very large systemic questions that we still have to get society to work behind, so, but thank you for that. And Commissioner Nissen, Jordan.
Thank you. My question simply follows along, Commissioner Tangi, but it's specifically on relating the results of these high offenders, the information from all of the different areas. So when you say, you know, there's less interaction with police at your action table or your joint management, do you have the ability to also say, "These offenders have significantly less visits to the emergency department, have significantly less interactions in other areas that can cause problems"? Is there that link of some data sharing, given all the challenges we have with data sharing in Alberta?
Commissioner, I would say in a limited way, to a couple of those points, and Commissioner Tangi's point as well, if you're designated as a heavy systems user, you would have more attention through the action table and through the work being done on the street. So we would be able to track, you know, what was happening in your journey, and to Cliff's point about the one individual, the reduced, hopefully, number of interactions you would be having with the police. For individuals like Commissioner Tangi was referring to, like the prolific offender with the 13 warrants, you're going to get screened, which never happened before, in arrest processing section through the SMART program. So that is a systemic piece that's there, but remember, we only have them for less than 24 hours. So if there is going to be a policy or a movement towards keeping some people in custody longer to allow them to avail themselves to programs, that's going to have to be another part of the system, as Chair Cornet mentioned. So I think there are things, I think right now we're taking it a bite at a time by identifying those heavy systems users, because we can evaluate and track based on that. We're not trying to boil the ocean right away, we're trying to actually focus and move a step at a time. I think that's an important piece of this.
And I would say we have had, because I don't want our officers that are out there doing the work to not recognize that every interaction they have is very important. And so with the work that they've done, you know, we have had people that, what they wanted was to move back with family, where there were supports out of town, and we've been able to accommodate them and do that. We've had people that, as the chief said, that were definitely in need of housing, and we were able to work with the city and get them moved up in that list for housing. So those officers that are out there that are dealing with our high systems users, they're looking for the root cause problem and trying to solve it.
Just a follow-up. So there's lots of evidence in the literature, both in health and in policing, that if you deal with the high-end users, you can make a difference, and it is, it's actually increasing effect, because you can show the individuals that are not as high that they have opportunities. So definitely support this endeavor.
All right. Thank you very much. I don't see any other questions, so I'll thank you very much for the report. Very interesting. Look forward to hearing progress as we go forward of the whole system issue as well. So thank you very much for that. With that, we can move on to Agenda Item 5.2, which is the Calgary Stampede Major Policing Event Plan. While the police commissions are not involved in operational decisions of the police, we do have a responsibility to ensure that the service has the appropriate plans, policy direction, and resourcing in place to manage major events. The Calgary Stampede has the potential to put strain on police resources if it does not include strong planning. So our goal in hearing from the service on this major event today is to ensure that we are comfortable with the with the plans that are in place. So please go ahead with that report.
Thanks, Chair, and I'll take that one directly. So as you mentioned, the annual Calgary Stampede will take place from July 4th to July 14th. The event will kick off on the 4th with a sneaky peak night on, on the fairgrounds. The rodeo midway will be located on the stampede grounds. Hundreds of related events will be held in various locations across the city. The highlight of the stampede is a parade on the 5th, and we expect to draw over 300,000 attendees. As with previous years, the 2024 Stampede will be a much anticipated event that will be attended by Calgarians and visitors to our city. The planning team is prepared for the event and particularly highlighting events on the grounds, which may require additional resources. They've also conducted tabletop exercises with SEMA, Calgary Fire Department, Community Standards by Law, Transit, and the Calgary Stampede Incident Command Team have provided to, have proven to be an excellent planning tool with willing and collaborative partners. So with that said, I'd like to introduce two presenters. First is Superintendent Joe Brar from our Operational Support Division, and along with Superintendent Brar is Acting Inspector Jean-François Derry from our Support Section, and he will be the Commander for Policing of the 2024 Stampede Events. So with that, I will hand it over to Superintendent Brar.
Just need a few seconds to get the PowerPoint up. Thank you, Amber. Thanks, Deputy in Chief, for introducing us. Thanks for having us here today to discuss the 2024 Calgary Stampede. Before I turn it over to the Instant Commander JF Derry, Acting Inspector JF Derry, I'll just kind of give, set the context. So us presenting on the Calgary Stampede Major Event Plan is nothing new to the Commission. This is something that we presented last year. We've been doing it for as long as I can remember. And what you'll realize is every year, the event just grows bigger and bigger. What used to be an event on the rodeo grounds with a fair and a couple of concerts and, on the premises, and then some festivals around town, has grown into probably one of the largest, second-largest music events in Calgary, sorry, in Canada, in North America. It's last year Calgary Stampede was being tagged as Coachella, which is, comes from Coachella, which is the largest music festival in the United States and the world. So more than just being a rodeo, now this is a, a music festival, rodeo, fairgrounds, and the parade and all that kind of stuff. So it is a big draw on policing resources. It takes a lot of planning to plan the Calgary Stampede Parade, and then also to plan for the Stampede Grounds and the festivals taking, taking place around Calgary. So this planning starts usually about six to seven months in advance. It actually starts the day after the stampede ends, but the official planning starts six to seven months in advance. Huge lift, lots of things to be mindful of. The Calgary Police Service's responsibility is to provide safety and security for all participants in the events, on the grounds, at any concerts or festivals. This year, we expect to see 10 days of concerts outside the grounds around Calgary, significant amount of concerts on the grounds itself, then lots of stampede breakfast, things along those lines. And to start off on Friday, next Friday, we will have a parade with about 300,000 people. So I will turn it over to Inspector JF Derry to take you through the plan, and then we can take some questions afterwards. And please keep in mind, there's been opportunity for questions now and later on in the meeting as well. So, we'll do, Joe.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me today. I'll just, I'm the Instant Commander for the Stampede this year. It's my second year, and like every year, we really tried to improve year to year on our product and what we provide to citizens of Calgary. Excuse me, I'm fighting a cold. So I'll just try to highlight the changes, the bigger changes from last year, which are improvements. As Superintendent Brar said, we've worked closely with the Calgary Stampede Incident Management Team to ensure the safety of the patrons on and off the grounds. They've had their own security details on the grounds, as well as three external gate security details to do back checks and monitor gate access. Working with them last year, we realized there was a lot of inconsistencies with these gates. Each gate was running kind of independently, even though they had been given the same criterias for searches and stuff like that. And so we really worked with them last year to improve that, just to make it safer. Since that time, they've implemented, or the Calgary Stampedes implemented their own gate supervisors, just to monitor the, you know, the product that's being done and the safety element of these gates. Excuse me. For the last few years as well, or for the last many years, we've obviously had pay duties at the coke stage, the stampede grounds, the grandstand, and basically all the major events on the grounds. The, these are called our Public Safety Response Team. They're all, the old Public Order Response Team is just a different acronym. What we looked at this year is, we realized that last year that we hadn't looked necessarily at all the events, and all the, we knew that they were coming, but we hadn't looked specifically at what kind of crowd they were bringing. And so we had to readjust last year. And so this year, we've worked with the Stampede to look at every specific concert, every event, to look what type of crowd they bring, if it's a more rowdy crowd, a more passive crowd. And we've truly adjusted the staffing levels and security levels in relations to that. I think that's a huge improvement. Superintendent Brar spoke about licensed tents outside the stampede grounds, obviously mostly a one district issue, or not a problem, but, you know, they're responsible for policing that. I believe that we have 11 tents or something like that this year. So it's marked increase from, I think, seven last year. So we've done a lot of, I'll talk about the strides next that we've made for staffing to increase also in one district to make sure that all these events are safe and they're well looked after. One of the changes that we've increased our staffing in one district to be at 80% for each shift, and that includes the day shifts. Like last year, we had 80% more on the night shifts and maybe a little bit less in the day shift, but realized that this has now become pretty much a 24-hour event, and that there's as much activity and events going on during the day. So, you know, they're as important. We've also received approval again for the PSRT, the Public Safety Response Teams, on the ground and in District One. So they're monitoring the extra, you know, staffing needs of different concerts and stuff like that. They're on the grounds, they're obviously redeployed within the stampede grounds. Off the grounds, they're redeployed as needed in one district and surrounding areas, in case there's just a need for maybe some crowd control, some, you know, just more police presence. We've also looked at the numbers. Last year, we almost broke the centennial record of 1.4 million. I think we're 16,000 away from that. I think we're 1.386 or something like that. And so this year, they're also, they're already, the pre-purchase numbers are high. And so we re-looked at our staffing plan that had existed for many years and thought that we need to increase it. And so in the day, we've increased by two, and it doesn't seem like a lot. It's actually means a lot once you're on the ground, on the grounds. So we have our community youth and services that actually take care of the policing on the grounds for the day shifts. They, they staff it completely. And so we've gone from a seven constable and one sergeant model to a nine plus one. Last year, we had Satina Nation Police Service and the Blood Tribe Police Service that have also, that also committed resources. I can't remember how many exactly, but they've committed resources this year again. So it's a great partnership with them. We had a lot of, you know, a lot of pride working with them, and so they will be joining us this year. Continuing the staffing deployment, the Volcan Crime and Depression Team will be working as well. Their mandate, or one of their mandates, is obviously the tents, all the major events, the concerts. That doesn't change from what they usually do, but they will be there. Our DSET teams, which is Formular Beats and Bikes, will also be working all the peripheral locations around the Calgary Stampede. If we want bike patrols on the stampede grounds, they have their own as well. So we will have that. For the nights, we realized last year that we were less visible. It's, you know, we have bigger numbers at night, and that's typically where, if we're going to have any issues, they occur. So we've increased our staffing. We've doubled it this year. So we've gone up to 14 with two sergeants. I think, and to minimize the impacts on the districts, because all the districts unfortunately are busy, we've engaged the SLT and ELT to partner with us. And so we will have members of the SLT, the ELT, and also multiple detective units that will be partnered up with our officers on the grounds. So it'll be great for visibility of our senior officers on the front line and with the public. The Big Four Building is, once again, a staging area or command post that doesn't change. We've brought in a full-time analyst for the entire of the stampede, just because we were finding that the information flow to our internal external partners last year sometimes was lagging. And so we'll have a full-time analyst and as well a full-time media person to liaise with the stampede media and with SEMA or whoever we need to liaise with. That way, we'll have united messaging if there's any, you know, positive or negative events that occur. So kind of as a recap, the improvements, obviously we have onsite analysts, we have larger teams. We've looked, we've tried to really tailor our planning based on the risk for certain events. We've continued our partnerships externally and internally. We have done, I believe it was two or three tabletop exercises with our internal, external partners, and we've gone through things such as weather events, overcrowding, ride failures, mass casualty events. It was a really good experience to, to work through that. We were able to kind of tighten a lot of our plans because of it. And also with, you know, the support of the Commission, we have a drone this year at the stampede. And so we've implemented 5.1 no-tam, no-fly zone, a no-drone zone, also for the Calgary Parade. What that means is that no other drones should be able to fly above these events when they're happening. We will also have our own drone on the grounds, and that'll give us, you know, capacity to monitor crowd size, to gather evidence if needed, or just to even get to certain areas that sometimes are difficult to get through with the crowds. I felt like I talked really fast. I apologize. Any questions?
Thank you for that question. So Commissioner Campbell?
Oh, sorry. Thanks very much. So circa in 2015, I believe, there was a campaign called Safe Stampede to attempt to address the rise in sexual assaults and sexual harassment during Calgary Stampede Festival. Does your major policing plan include distinct strategies and plans to address safety and address sexual harassment, sexual assault, sexual violence, and sex trafficking that occurs during stampede?
Thank you. So to answer your question, that is something that we do not only in relation to the stampede, but to all concerts and festivals and events. So obviously, high police visibility and presence, having stampede security there as well, and then also having the two private contractors. There'll be lots of police visibility. Our Media Relations Unit will push out messaging and tips on how to, for people to keep safe. Basically, the message is, see something, say something, realizing that, like JF said, this is, turns into a 24-hour event, lots of alcohol, lots of parties. So there is increased risk. So our message is obviously for people to stay safe themselves, and obviously to be out there policing and be highly visible. And that will go for all events here at the summer.
Will there be, in the communication strategy, will there be opportunities for reporting or ease of reporting of, for incidents, particularly for sexual assaults?
Yes, good question. So one of the things is, there is no statute of limitations on sexual assault offenses. So we will be putting out messaging on where to report and how to report. And obviously, you've heard about Calgary Police Service's trauma and for approach to sexual assaults and sexual violence. So that'll be in play as well. Obviously, we'll provide the contact numbers for our community partners. That also provides support in the community.
Thank you very much. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Ogil.
Thank you. How'd you arrive at 80%? Like, why wouldn't it be 100, 110? Like, in District One, given some of the existential issues globally and things that have happened since October? And in this commission, in some of these commission meetings, it's my understanding that 80% oftentimes doesn't mean 80%, because people are on, you know, lack of, overtime, like, the number isn't always the same as what you're reporting.
So, good question. I think the resources are the resources, and they're not infinite by any means, as you guys are aware. In addition to the stampede grounds itself, we'll be policing the festivities off the grounds, and then also regular service delivery throughout the, out the service. It's also one of our busiest times of years for other events as well. So 80% is actually a really good number, and that's what we believe that we need to maintain to provide effective and efficient policing services.
Okay. In the, just to follow on, then, in the tabletop exercises, did you, did you discuss potentialities of things like, that have, like, because of what's happened since October?
Can we answer that question later on in the meeting?
Certainly. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Commissioner Song.
Thanks. Thanks for the presentation. My question is about that bullet item on page seven you didn't talk about, is ELT, SLT members will be paired with active patrol members, which improve visibility of senior officers to the frontline. So is that a new, this year, or has it been, like, adopted in previous stampedes?
It's, it's always been a part of stampede. It's not uncommon for senior officers to show up on the parade grounds to support the members and also be visible. I think what's different this year is we're just taking more of a structured approach to it, where we'll actually team up the senior officer with a patrol member, so they can form a partnership. And rather than being a ride-along, they're actually effective in helping support everything that's going on the grounds.
Thanks. And then is this stampede only a major event that this model is being used, or is actually being useful in other situations?
So maybe this is a question for the XO and the chief to answer, but we are actively, the senior officers are actively engaged in participating in community events. We actually, every week at our ELT, SLT meeting, we're provided with a list of events that are available to attend, and we encourage all our members to attend those. So this is common practice. It's just something that we're highlighting here for the staffing plan this year.
I'm able to just add, Commissioner Jiang, on to what Superintendent Brar said. So for the purposes of stampede and some of these events, this is just more structured in terms of the senior officers showing up at a particular time, working patrol duties, as opposed to attending other functions or dropping in. So it's just more structured, so that you can count on those numbers in terms of staffing the shifts. So I would say that, as has been said, it's not something that hasn't been done. It's just a bit more structured in this particular case.
Okay. Thanks for clarification. Bye, Chair.
Thank you. Keep your, keep them on their toes. Commissioner Nice and Jordan.
Just to follow up on a couple of the points. So first of all, I personally find that saying 80% is really good enough. It doesn't make a lot of sense. So whether we need to redefine that in terms of public perception, why would we not go with adequate staffing? So I, I have a problem with the 80% as well. The second component relates to our usual abilities to report harassment issues. Is there going to be a specific place or area or intake that will occur on the, on the grounds? Because that's what's going to make it a lot easier for people to step up. They won't be able to necessarily go down to District One or wherever the intake is. So is there something on the site? Thank you.
Good question. So, and this is something we can communicate out through our comms plan, through Director Nun's shop. But there is a Ninth Police District that's set up in the Big Four Building. So there's police officers that'll be present there, and events can be reported to any police officer on the grounds.
Thank you. Commissioner Wong.
Just to follow up on that one, do you find those types of incidences particularly on the ground or around the grounds? And I'm thinking, I'm thinking, for example, you got, I forget the name of the group, directly north of the Saddle Dome, for example, the big tent area, or on Ninth Avenue, or, do you find those, you know, those harassment types of events on the ground or outside the ground? Thereby, the intake, intake of it being inside the grounds, where you need to have a ticket to get in there?
I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I can tell you that the potential for that to happen is on the grounds and at any beer tents, or the festival tents, or any other place. So we don't, while we don't see an increase in reporting of sexual violence offenses, not to say it doesn't happen, and not all offenses go. it doesn't happen, and not all offenses go reported, but there's nothing that I have in front of me that shows that there is any higher reporting on the Stampede grounds versus the beer tents.
Yeah. My only concern is if it's happening outside, and you need a ticket to get inside to get to the Big Four Building, you know, that's the issue. But thank you.
But we will still have our regular reporting channels to 2661234, the district offices. So anything that takes place outside the Stampede grounds will be policed as per normal. We do have, like I said, 80% staffing in District One to deal with all those festivals and tents that are happening. So that's what I meant by effective and efficient policing. We believe that 80% is the number that we need to be able to deliver those services. Keeping in mind, we also have a real-time operations center. If we need, we can deploy other resources from around the city to the Stampede grounds or to the core, and just go to a differential call response. So I believe that we're well-prepared to deal with this.
Chair, can I ask you one question about, not directly about this, but about the Stampede?
Sure.
Thank you. Chief, you know I've had this conversation before. Calgary Police Services has a recruitment table in the grounds itself, and year after year, you're right beside Canadian forces. And I always wonder why. Are we there, or could we be separated away from there? So does that, it doesn't get the impression it's Police-Military, Police-Military Association? Thank you.
It's a good question. I suspect the arrangement of the Stampede sort of writ large is a Stampede thing. So recruiting, they probably try to put like with like. We could certainly see, I think we see that same thing though at a lot of recruiting events, whether it be first responders, when we've hosted them too. We've had the military, and EMS, and fire, and private security, and everybody there, City of Calgary. So that's just something that generally happens. I don't know what perception that leaves with people in terms of, you know, like, their interest one way or the other, but I think that just happens as a result of the way that the Stampede grounds gets organized.
Great. Thank you. And thank you very much for that report. I don't see any other questions. Appreciate your bringing that back again this year, and it sounds like there's some good improvements, so we'll look forward to a good Stampede. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we can move on to the next item, 5.3, which is the annual policing plan. Turn that back over to the chief.
Thank you, Chair. 2024 Annual Policing Plan. I'm going to turn this one over to Chad to do the introduction. Deputy Toffick.
Thanks, Chief, and thanks, Chair. This is the first time this one is coming forward for an actual mid-year update as far as the 2024 Annual Policing Plan. We have Inspector Bev Voros, Manager Amory Hamilton-Henry, and Business Strategist Selena Clausen here. Of course, this has come through subcommittees, but we're here to provide the overview for the public session. So I'll turn it right over to you, Bev.
That'll work. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. This APP mid-year report provides an update on the progress of our KPIs, our key performance indicators, outlined in our 2024 APP. We did present at all four subcommittees to CPC, so I'm thinking that everyone here has pretty much heard us already. This is our public presentation. What we're going to do today is I'm going to talk about our new dashboard that's coming out. Selena has created it way earlier than our 2025 presentation was supposed to come forward. It has three different things. It should be noticed that our KPIs are on track and they're viewed as green. We have successfully completed our KPIs, and our activities are on point at that time. If the KPIs come out as yellow or progressing, it means that they're slightly delayed or the data is not yet available. So we've listened to the feedback from CPC, and we have a few more that are progressing due to our data. If they're in the red, it's up to us articulate why these are delayed, and we'll give you an explanation for those. Right now, we have 30 KPI activities that are on track, 11 that are progressing, and one that is off-track, which is our social media engagement rate. To give a quick explanation of that, it was due to hiring, and we have mitigated that risk. We have a lot of good news stories to share with you as well. The efforts to re-establish the Indigenous Advisory Circle is progressing well. Significant efforts have been made to provide Indigenous experience or learning opportunities, including sweat ceremonies and internal training sessions. Initiatives like Operation Domino Effect, targeting drug trafficking on transit, have contributed to a reduction in violent crime in public spaces. There's a lot more good news stories. We're going to share the dashboard with you. It will be externally facing once we get approval here. So I'll turn it over to Selena to give you a quick preview.
Thank you, Inspector, and good afternoon, everyone. Like Inspector Voros said, this is our first time reporting the annual policing plan in this format. So last update in January, you would have seen mockups of this new report format, report card format, as we're calling it. And since then, we have taken those mockups and transferred them into this interactive dashboard that we've created. We are a big fan of this dashboard because it allows the reader to interact with areas of interest. You can kind of get a very good overview of what's on track, off track, just right from the get-go, and then identify those areas of interest to dig deeper for more detail. So what I will do is I'll just kind of walk you through the pages of this dashboard and show you a bit how we interact with it, and then I will leave it to questions. So right from the landing page here, you can see that we have just a few tips on how to read the report card, how to interpret the spotlight status, which would be great for first-time readers. So from the landing page here, and there might be a lag, I can just click to view the report card, which takes us to the goal view page, where you can see all 15 goals for 2024. On the right-hand side, you'll notice that there is a bit of a pie chart kind of visual for each KPI, and that represents the status of, or sorry, for each goal, which represents the status for each KPI within that goal. At the top, you'll notice that there is a legend that describes what each of those colored statuses mean, and within, you also have the count of KPIs as well. So another feature is that you can, in the top right corner, you can select a filter if you'd like to further tailor the view of these updates. So I'll give you an example of that. So that just filters the visuals, so you can kind of hone in on areas of interest. And then you can also just clear the filter, return to the original view. Also, in the top right, you'll see that there is a little instruction box that helps you interact with the dashboard, that lets you know that if you right-click on one of these goals, it'll drill through for further details, so I'll go ahead and do that. And it's just a simple few clicks that'll get you to the next view, which would be the goal detail view. And this view, you will see the KPIs within that goal as well as their status. And then, just like the previous page, you can do that right-click and drill through for further details and updates on the KPI. So this page here has, it's our most detailed page of the report, and you can see we have the narrative updates, our mid-year kind of narrative for this reporting period. You can also see to the right-hand side, we have details like primary ownership, which bureau has primary ownership, data sources, and where relevant, we would also add data commentary. At the top right, you will also see we have our baseline data from 2023, our targets, and then for KPIs that do have a statistic update, you would see that there as well. You might be wondering if you have to go through every single KPI to get the narrative. So to give a better overview with those detailed updates, I think especially for that first view of the report, we've created some alternative views that you can select from the left-hand side. One of those would be this table of KPI statuses that lists all 42 KPIs with their statuses. And just like the other pages, you can do that kind of drill-through to get to further detail. And then the final, most detailed view, also on the left-hand side, would be the full KPI update. So it's a table that has each indicator, all of the narrative updates, the kind of stoplight status, and then you can have that drill-through function as well. So I will stop there. That's kind of all of the pages I have to show you, and I will open it up to questions.
Thank you very much. It's an awesome system. We've seen it at committees this, two weeks ago, and so it was presented to each committee, and there was little bits that were added in terms of our feedback, and it's very nice to see that there. So thank you very much. And a great system, very easy to use and get through. So that will, as you commented earlier, just to reinforce, that'll be a public-facing dashboard, once we get it up and running, which should be very shortly. So thank you very much for all of that, and I will turn it over to Commissioners for any questions. Commissioner Mallon?
Thank you. Very impressive system. As you develop it now for the public, do you have the opportunity to test it with any groups in the public before actually putting it out there? Like, I'm just thinking, we know all this stuff from other sources, and I think it's really easy to find it, but I'm just wondering if you ever do pre-test anything with the public in terms of the usability for them?
I'll turn that over, actually, to DC Toffick to take that.
Great question, Commissioner. It's actually live as we speak. We just published it live on our external site, so it should be accessible to the public right now. And so on that, I think we would have an opportunity to have a feedback mechanism with an email where they can provide that type of feedback to us, and then we can adjust as necessary. But we can also take this through to our advisory boards and get their feedback as well. So great point.
Yeah, even if it was the instructions to be stated differently or something like that. Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Siddiqui? Oh, sorry. Nope. Taking that back. Eisen Jordan?
Sorry, this follows along. If you don't do pre-testing, is there an explicit mechanism to provide post-publishing feedback? Is there something on there that shows them that they can provide feedback?
Go ahead.
So at the moment, no, but I think that's a very good point, and we can, I think, quite easily add that mechanism. Maybe it's an email or place to submit questions, but we will take that on board for sure. Thank you.
If I can just add to that, we will be promoting it through social media as well. So what we'll do is make sure as part of that, we'll include a mechanism for feedback, via social media and/or on the website. So we'll take care of that.
Perfect. Thank you. Seeing no more questions, that's the advantage of taking it to every committee meeting that we had last week. We can move on. Thank you very much for all of the work that went into that. Appreciate it. And we'll move on to Agenda 5.4, which is the anti-racism report update.
And over to Deputy Chief McClellan for that.
Thanks, Chief. Good afternoon, everyone. May was once again an incredibly busy month across our bureau and across our service. Members of our diversity resource team have been integral in working with both community and our own advisory boards and members as issues from around the world impact Calgarians. Some of our executive members have also attended numerous meetings with our advisory boards and Circle, our External Anti-Racism Action Committee, and other community groups following concerns raised, particularly after the protest at the UOC. These boards and committees serves as crucial link between the service and the community, and we are committed to ensuring their concerns are heard and that we work together to find a path forward. I would also like to recognize the challenging and difficult situation they and other members of the service navigate as being both members of impacted communities and representatives of the Calgary Police Service. We understand how complex and emotionally demanding their work has been, and we want to commend them for not only their enduring commitment to community engagement, but also their ongoing focus on internal education and awareness. There have also been several opportunities for both our sworn and civilian members to participate in events and ceremonies across Calgary and within the service, including the Diversity Level 2 Training offered by our DRT. The feedback of the training reflects both the efforts of the entire bureau to educate and create awareness, but also the willingness and the desire for members across the service to acquire a deeper understanding, to better equip and inform when responding to calls for service across our city. I would like to share a few highlights from our bureau that have demonstrated our commitments and actions. Our racial equity office provided our anti-racism training to 57 members of the service in May, and also provided additional training to nine members of the Calgary Police Commission in June. Our racial equity office anti-racism advisor, Shu Porter, collaborated once again with the Office of Respect and Inclusion and Indigenous Relations Team to facilitate the cultural humility workshop for the entire Strategic Services Unit in May. This workshop aimed to equip our members with the tools to engage more effectively with individuals from diverse backgrounds, with the goal of building inclusive communities and teams. Our Indigenous Relations Team hosted a film screening for the CPS members of A Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women, Girls, and Two-Spirited Documentary to honor Red Dress Day with a discussion afterwards with Elder Jackie Bromley and other Indigenous community members to discuss not only the importance of the day, but the vital role policing plays in calls to justice. On May 17th, the CPS and the IRT hosted the Elder's Knowledge Society Circle, the EKSC, at the sacred space for their second meeting at the CPS. It's a great honor for the EKSC to choose the CPS to host their meetings, and we look forward to our working relationship with the group as we continue to address our police-related truth and reconciliation calls to action and Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and Girls' Call for Justice. The IRT also assisted and hosted Elder Pablo Russell in a pipe ceremony for our Domestic Conflict Unit, which was held in our sacred space on May 15th. Members of the Domestic Conflict Unit had recently attended a traumatic call which had affected many of them, and Elder Russell held a grieving pipe ceremony to help them on their path to healing. As we know, June is Indigenous History Month, and our IRT had the honor of attending many events across Calgary, including the Aboriginal Awareness Week, Calgary's National Indigenous Family Day, and Powaw, where the chief was also in attendance. We have also been invited to stand up the chief's TP at Heritage Park for National Indigenous Peoples' Day. They will be busy, all of us will be busy through July, attending the July 1st TP teachings at the Confluence Historic Site and Parkland, and the Elbow River Camp at Stampede, with support from our diversity resource team and many of our community mobilizers. The diversity team, as I mentioned, organized and delivered the Diversity Level 2 Training in May. That is designed to educate civilian and sworn members about various cultures, communities in Calgary, and encouraging them to critically analyze how to use this information in our daily work with public interactions. Some feedback reflected a very positive appreciation for the course. Some of the comments expressed gratitude for the opportunities to increase knowledge and learned new strategies that seem to be reflected in the willingness to use them when interacting with diverse communities. Constable Randhawa organized the first South Asian Faith Leaders Meeting at the McDougall Center. Approximately 40 leaders from various South Asian communities attended, as well as local and provincial politicians. There were broad discussions about current and future issues that could be faced by our communities. As ongoing geopolitical events create tension here in Calgary, our Hate Crime Prevention Team is aware of what may be a temporary spike in hate incidents and hate crime is being reported. Education and awareness are crucial at times like this, and our ongoing presence in schools, community groups, and on social media are aimed to ensure people know why, how, and where to report crime. On May 25th, the Crime Prevention Team, in partnership with Youth Link, Calgary Police Interpretive Center, hosted a Summer Safety Day. The day was filled with valuable information, engagement with many of our officers, and offered activities designed with youth in mind, all to help youth make the most of their summer while staying safe. Also, in partnership with Youth Link, just last week, together, we unveiled the new Victim Assistance Support Team exhibit. This team, compiled of compassionate officers, civilians, volunteers, and support dogs, give unwavering support on a daily basis to victims of crime and tragedy. Please take the time to visit Youth Link and check out this new exhibit. A few updates with respect to our crisis response initiatives. As I mentioned before, the Calgary 211-911 Co-location Initiative reached the milestone of diverting 10,000 calls since the program began in February 2022. As of May 31st, more than 120... calls since the program began in February 2022. As of May 31st, more than 120,000 calls have been diverted from emergency services to more appropriate resources provided by community partners, and more than 19,000 resources have been provided to callers. The Action Tables are mentioned briefly. They have been working successfully with their community partners to provide coordinated support and services to people in crisis. As of June 25th, 39 cases have been reviewed by the Action Table, and currently, we have 47 programs participating in the weekly Action Table meetings. The United Way and the service have worked with these partners on a midterm evaluation, which will help to streamline and improve our current processes to best serve Action Table clients. Earlier in June, members of our section attended a conference put on by Focus Toronto the group Action Table was modeled from. At the conference, members attended multiple training sessions specific to improving our processes for things like our Action Table, and we will continue to refine our process. And finally, our PAC teams, police and crisis teams, we're currently planning our first crisis response mental health conference for October of this year. This conference will provide a venue for our PAC teams across Canada to network, collaborate, and learn about police interactions and mental illness. As we have some members of the service presenting at the conference, this will be a great opportunity to highlight aspects of our work on a national level. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. Lots going on. I'll turn it over to commissioners for questions. Commissioner Mallon?
Thank you, Chair. My question is probably for DC McLellan, but maybe for ED Murphy and maybe for CPO Armstrong. As I was reading this, I thought, this is an update on how we're doing on our anti-racism initiative. And on page four and five, you report various crimes that are related to racism and hate. These crimes are all crimes that are committed in the community. Is it possible to add others, like might be complaints to PSS on a race issue, or complaints to the HR system on race issues? Like, those would be equally crimes, and would maybe give a fuller picture. And I don't know if there's privacy laws that would prevent that, but I just thought it would give a broader picture of that issue.
I can start. Thanks for your question. Thanks for your comment. I don't see why we wouldn't, but Catherine, you might have a comment there?
Sure. So in relation to internal complaints, we do report to COC regularly on the number of complaints that PSS receives that allege differential treatment by police, including on the basis of race or other protected grounds like gender. And by COC, I'm referring to the Complaints Oversight Committee of the Commission. As you know, we've been discussing expanding the terms of reference of that committee to also include internal workplace-related matters. Due to privacy laws, I would suggest we do that in committee as opposed to a public report, just given that it engages individual complainants and employees. But we're happy to continue to do that and to move forward to doing it in an expanded way.
Would numbers violate, like, if you don't give other information, just numbers?
Yeah, we can absolutely report numbers of PSS complaints, like, on an aggregate basis that we receive annually. I can tell you, those numbers are relatively low, like very low in the single digits, sometimes double digits per year of all of our complaints. However, I think that it's still, despite not really being able to draw much substantive conclusions from that, I think it's an issue that's underreported, which is why the numbers are so low. And we have been discussing that in COC. So no concerns with reporting the aggregate.
Well, I just thought, in one place, it is only a piece of the crimes, I guess, here. And if it was possible even to give aggregate numbers, I think it would just round it out a bit. And also, over time, if you want to track change, you've got it all in one place. That's just a thought. Thank you.
Just maybe one small caution. I would not necessarily equate the PSS complaints or workplace complaints with crimes, like with hate incidents or crimes. So I think when we report it, we will do that here, but we'll do it separately, just because they can be of a very different nature than what this is capturing here.
Commissioner Nice and Jordan?
My question relates to the hate crime issue as well. Given the numbers that appear to be going up from both hate crimes as well as hate incidents, have we started to think about mitigation strategies similar to what we saw with the redirect program, and whether or not, especially from a youth perspective, if there was some way to get into some educational process once they've been charged or once the incident has occurred, whether or not there's some way to mitigate that? Because I'm concerned about the trend with that.
Yeah, I think one of the ways we do that right now is through the Foundation Program. So I'm thinking specifically of the YARD Program, the Youth Risk Development. So if we were seeing that, there are like SROs and other officers would make referrals through to that program. So that could be one of the ways that we would do it there. So the structures are in place now for that, but you're right. As we see sort of movement in that direction from young people, we certainly should be looking at that. And that's an unfortunate new trend, I think, in society these days.
Thank you. Any further questions? We appreciate the update on the report. Lots going on, and appreciate getting an update regularly. So, very much appreciate that. And we'll move on to Item 5.5, which is the Crime Trends Report. Turn it back over. There's two reports on this one. The first covers what the investigative areas of the service are seeing, and the second report covers what frontline officers are seeing. So there's two parts. If we can present both of those, and then the commissioners will have a chance to ask questions about both reports together. Thanks.
Sounds good. We'll go first with Deputy Gill from the Bureau of Community Policing, and then Paul will follow up with BIS.
Thanks, Chair. Thanks, Chief. Commissioner, or sorry, I should say, Commissioner Cornet articulated very well already some of the notable policing, district policing and investigative success stories over the month. So thank you for that. Therefore, I will refer Commission to the May crime snapshots for a fulsome look at the latest crime trends, notable events, and community relations activities. Briefly, the good news story is that crime, vehicle crime and break-in enters, both commercial and residential, as well as social disorder continues to trend below the five-year average. Assaults, assault with a weapon, and robbery roll jobs are also down compared to where they were at this time last year, however, are slightly higher than the five-year trend. However, we are seeing an uptick in commercial robberies, the majority being shoplifting offenses that turn into robberies when a loss prevention officer intervenes. Loss prevention officers or other employees are often victimized during these offenses. Today, I want to, moving away from the crime trends into other activities, today I want to share a story with you about a new family to Canada and how our frontline officers work quickly to ensure their safety and long-term well-being. Earlier in the month, officers located the family standing outside the drop-in center. The mom was holding her 19-month-old daughter and kept her 10-year-old son close by, where the husband sought assistance from the DI staff. Officers spoke to the family, learned they had just landed in Calgary, had no money or any other place to stay, so a taxi dropped them off at the drop-in center. The family arrived in Montreal in May as refugees from Nigeria. The officers took the family to District 1 Police Station while arrangements could be made. They called around to housing supports, were able to arrange for emergency housing and hotel, as well as food vouchers from the nearby Safeway near the hotel, along with a booklet of bus tickets. The family were provided with resource information for Alberta Works, Source, In From the Cold, and Calgary Housing. The officers drove the family to their temporary residence and also ensured that they were safely checked into the hotel and could find their way to the Safeway. A few days later, the officers checked in on the family again and found they had run out of food vouchers. Were able to organize a food hamper from the food bank and drop it off for the family, as well as arrange for another week of lodging and further connections to the Action Table Calgary, as Deputy McLellan mentioned, to ensure a warm handoff occurred. I share that story just to demonstrate the valuable link our frontline officers play between the community they serve and the social supports available that we've, we continue to work in collaboration with our city partners and our other partners, and the examples that Deputy McLellan gave in her presentation earlier speak to a lot of that work. Happy to answer the questions on any of the crime trends that you see. The material is in front of you, and, like I said, most of the stuff is trending in the right direction. We have a few areas that we continue to focus in on, particularly the loss prevention officers or the crimes that are turning into roll jobs or robberies. Our crime reduction officers in each of the districts are fully engaged with local businesses, particularly those businesses that are often repeat locations where offenses occur, to talk about crime reduction activities and prevention, and other safety planning that they can provide to these businesses. So with that, over to Deputy Cook.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chair. In summary of my report, I would like to acknowledge that today marks International Day Against Drug Abuse and Illicit Trafficking. Last year, 571 people lost their lives due to drug overdoses in Calgary. This is a community issue, and as police, we have dedicated resources to hold drug traffickers accountable. Last year, our drug unit started the overdose pilot in an effort to maintain consistency in all overdose deaths investigations. Since the project began, we've charged 11 individuals with a total of 106 Criminal Code offenses and Controlled Drugs and Substance Act offenses. In May, our overdose investigators concluded two separate drug trafficking investigations that began following fatal overdoses in August of 2022 and November of 2023. In each investigation, officers collected evidence to identify drug traffickers who had been in contact with victims prior to their deaths. In these cases, these investigations resulted in three individuals charged with a combined 49 drug and firearms offenses. Investigators also seized a large amount of drugs and a firearm. Although there was not enough evidence to lay charges in relation to the overdose deaths themselves, this is important work being done by our drug unit to hold those responsible for drug trafficking and our communities accountable. So far this year, 42 shootings have been reported in Calgary, which is 11% decrease from the same period last year, and represents a 26% reduction to our five-year average. As I've reported previously, the majority of these shootings were targeted, and as expected, only a small number have a confirmed connection to organized crime at this time. Since our last update, we've recorded one more homicide. So far this year, there have been eight homicides in Calgary, which is one less compared to this time last year. So far, six of these files have been resolved, representing a clearance rate of 75%. The most recent file was a result of a fatal altercation between two teenagers and resulted in the tragic death of a 16-year-old male. Following his death, a 17-year-old male was arrested and charged. In May, our historical homicide team was also involved in an RCMP announcement that linked four Calgary-era homicides from the 1970s to a now-deceased serial killer. Our investigators played an integral role in this case through their expertise in investigative genetic genealogy. Through this incredible work, CPS detectives were able to identify the suspect, work closely with the RCMP investigators. This inter-agency collaboration continues to be an important priority for our service to advance investigations. Since the media release, the RCMP has received more than 50 tips from Alberta, British Columbia, and the United States. The investigation into these tips remain ongoing. From January to May, our domestic violence reports were about 6% lower than the five-year average. Alternatively, our domestic conflict reports continue to be approximately 12% higher than the five-year average. As I stress every month, the increase in reporting is encouraging, as we believe it reflects the ability to intervene in situations before they become potentially dangerous, reporting domestic conflict prior to the situation escalating to violence. To further touch on the collaboration efforts of our Bureau, our cyber forensic unit has been working diligently to advance our partnerships within the public and private sector to address cybercrime in Calgary. This includes planning to host our service's fifth Cyber Focus Conference in the fall. These partnerships are invaluable to our efforts to train our investigators, disrupt cybercriminals, and protect Calgarians. I cannot stress enough, collaboration and partnership in this space is critical. Lastly, our Sexual Self Investigative Unit also worked closely with partners last month, hosting a presentation by Homeland Security Investigations, who shared information about Project iGuardian, which is a program designed to educate law enforcement about online predators, extortion, and how to prevent victimization. This was an important training opportunity, which was attended by members from across our service. Chief and Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Thank you for both of those reports, and I'll turn it over to commissioners for any questions. I mean, Commissioner Ogilvy?
Thank you, Deputy Cook. Further to Commissioner Tangi's question about the fellow with 13, or maybe it was a woman with 13, and the other one was 14, where are they? On page three of your report, in total, three individuals have been charged with a combined 49 criminal offenses, including trafficking of a controlled substance, possession of property obtained by crime, and firearms offenses. Where are these guys?
Commissioner, thank you for the question. I should know by now. I don't have that detail on specific individuals.
I think that people of Calgary would like to know that. Like, you know, I just, like, we, don't get me wrong, Deputy Cook, this is great, and we appreciate it, but, you know, I think people, this information must be available. Like, the justice service, the catch-and-release of these people, people in the city want to know that. And I do. I'm just, it's really frustrating.
Commissioner, trust me when I say, my frustration is probably as equal or greater to yours. Our chief has briefed many times at this commission and also at the national level in around judicial interim release in our bail system. I won't speak specifically to these three, because I don't know. But in my experience, I would suggest that they're either released, or the vast majority of people that we are charging are released.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Thanks very much. Deputy Chief Gill, how are we progressing on creating some differentiation in the category of disorder beyond the charts that are on page four of your report? An indecent act is much different than a welfare check, and they're still categorized together as disorder.
Commissioner Campbell, thanks for the question. And I know your desire to have a bit more of a breakout. I can assure you that my team is working on it. Quite honestly, I only have so many resources, so many analysts. With the onset of our crime enforcement reduction teams, our high-system user teams and everything else, our crime analysts are quite overtaxed, if I could say that. So I commit to you that as we have time and as we are able to continue to modify this report, we are working on that. I just don't have it for you this month, and I hope to have it for you later on this year.
Thanks very much. I guess I'm building quite a reputation for overtaxing CPS resources. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Mallon?
For Deputy Cook, in the increase, we've talked for, actually, over a year, I think, that it's good that domestic conflict is being reported. So when these reports come in, do police ensure that there's pretty intensive follow-up, like that people get to the right resources, so that the conflict does indeed not escalate?
In short, yes, absolutely. Not only are we making assessments around connecting in with partners, we're also making risk assessments through each one of those incidents, like a risk assessment through an assessment.
Commissioner Siddiqui?
Thanks, Chair. Deputy Chief Cook, I had a question about the cybercrime piece that you spoke about. I know that the service is considered experts in this area. So you spoke about a conference, if I'm correct. Do we recoup our costs or generate any revenue in that area so that we could put it back into the program?
We do. And when we contribute back to the program, it's more trying to send more members, either with us or with partner agencies, to attend the conference. So it is revenue generating. In the previous years, it's been revenue generating. We have more applicants now than we did for the previous one at the same time. So we're encouraged it will sell out again.
Great. I love revenue generation. And then the other question- And then the other question around that is, when you go out and you're consulting with companies in Calgary and beyond, are we charging them for our expertise as well?
No, we're not.
It'd be great if we could, because then it'd be more revenue generation.
I think, the only thing I would say, though, is that, like, in isolation, the police cannot combat this problem. So their strength is in partnerships unequivocally. Because it would be, the other side of that coin is partners that don't want to help, like, it has not been transactional in our experience. There are many community-minded companies that have incredible IT professionals that are willing, because they have that conscience around public safety and community safety, that they want to participate in this space. They are actively engaged in this space.
And I appreciate that, and I'm not trying to be flippant. I just think we're so good in this area, I know we're good in many areas, but we are so good in this area that it would be nice if we could figure out a way to create more revenue generation to become even better. That's all, so thank you.
I appreciate the compliment, and I know the folks that are in this space every day appreciate the recognition. But I'd be remiss not to say the support that we've had from this commission so that we can be progressive. We're progressive in our equipment, we're progressive in our training, we're progressive in the talent that we have. We could not do that without the commitment of the City Council and this commission to make sure that we're staffed and equipped appropriately. And as the chief just approved earlier this week, it's an expensive space, but we need to lean into it hard. So thank you.
Any further questions? Commissioner Tangi?
Thank you for your reports, Deputy Gill and Cook. First question, on the community policing, is it possible that we can start moving into heat mapping so that we can actually see where these crimes are occurring? Especially when we just had a nice presentation, being told we got to get out there and tell all the positive about what the city's doing. I'd like to actually see what those heat maps are looking like and what that's changing like. So that'll be my first question.
Commissioner, short answer is yes, we have that internally. And I will work with my team, see how we can factor that into our report.
That'd be great. Second question's actually for both. In the Bureau of Community Policing, we talked about 64 charges on May 2nd for drug trafficking operation, and then an overdose through the other 40 charges. Are those the same? Like, are the 40 charges part of the 64 charges, or are these separate?
I believe mine are separate from the report from Deputy Gill. But our enforcement in relation to drug offenses is substantial. So I will, it won't happen again. Like, if I make reference to criminal charges being laid, I will know what happened in the JIR, in the release. So this happened to me twice, it's not going to happen to me three times.
You know what they say about three strikes?
I know.
Just to add on to that, I appreciate that part as well. I do agree with Commissioner Ogilvy that people want to know what happens after, and that was part of the questions before. I'm curious, and this is a separate and final question. Of all of the drugs being collected, are we still seeing pill presses or fake pills? As that seems to be recently reported again, and yet, you know, clinically, I don't see it at all, and I know I'm not supposed to talk about that part, but I'm curious if we're actually seeing that, or, you know, it's mentioned it's just pure fentanyl and then hydromorphone and oxycodone.
Testing my memory, in recent, I cannot recall a search warrant recently where we're seizing a pill press. Some of the great efforts that we're doing with our partners with CBSA, with some of that equipment coming into our country, we have seized them previously. I can't recall one recently. I think it's important, if I could just go back, in around judicial interim release. There was a national media release that was speaking to the carjackings, the violence primarily in the GTA, in around stolen vehicles and armed carjackings. The analysis was 50% of those offenders charged were out on release. So I asked my analyst that same question today. My speculation would be, across the board with auto theft, way more than 50% would be out on some sort of release. Last year, we reported to this commission, out of all of our homicides, 50% of the offenders were out on release. It continues to be a pressing community safety issue for all communities in Canada that our chiefs nationally are trying to lead through with government.
I really appreciate that, and it does sound like good media release, Chief. But anyways, it's a problem, I think we all know it, I think we're all agreeing with it. Thank you on the pill press part, I think that's come up lately with regards to some of the media and some people believing there's still fake pills going around, which I don't believe that's actually true, and I think that helps substantiate some of that, thanks.
Great, thank you. And thank you for all those reports. Seeing no further questions, we have a motion to receive the chief reports, Safe Public Spaces, Major Policing Event, the Calgary Stampede, the Annual Policing Plan, Anti-Racism Report, and the Two Crime Updates. So can I have a motion, Commissioner Tangi, and a second? Commissioner Ogilvy, are any against approving that motion? The motion is then carried. Thank you again for all the work that went into all of those things. And with that, we'll move on to Agenda Item 6. The, this section is representative updates from the Commissioners who represent our Commission on various associations and committees. This includes the Canadian Association for Police Governance, the Alberta Association for Police Governance, and the Calgary Police Youth Foundation. So I will ask if there are any verbal updates from the Commissioners. So Commissioner Tangi first?
So I apologize for no written, I've apologized a few times today for that one, sorry. So just from the Alberta Association of Police Governance, as you know, there's a special advisor policing governance position, full-time position that closes on Tuesday. It's been sent out to all Commissioners across the province. The AAPG will be reviewing and recommending three candidates of that. So again, really strongly recommend if you're interested in this advisory position to apply. The conference was quite successful at the AAPG down in Lethbridge, the next one will be in Witasgawin. This year, we'll actually have a conference committee rather than just having an ED run the whole thing by themselves. And so that's going to shift things. If there are ideas, happy to take those ideas. And there was a motion passed at the last one on workplace harassment by the Calgary Police Commission. We're discussing how to actually put that together, and likely it's going to end up in the conference and having a very special panel dedicated to workplace harassment and looking at what that's going to look like. And speaking to some of our smaller commissions, larger commissions, and national and international, what is being done with workplace-related harassment and policing. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Siddiqui?
Just a quick comment, that the CAPG annual conference is August 8th to the 11th in Halifax this year. The topic is "Where Governance Meets Public Safety", and very proud that we have CPC and CPS members who are presenting at the conference this year.
Thank you. And I will say that I represent Commission on the Calgary Police Youth Foundation, and their annual meeting is actually tomorrow, so I don't have an update for today. So thank you for that. Any questions for any of the, our two representatives from the other Commissioners?
It's Westlock, not Witasgawin, it's a W, sorry.
Close.
Yes, Witasgawin's a little closer than Westlock, but I know we're all excited to go to Westlock, so.
Chief, Chief Newfeld?
Just quickly for Commissioner Tangi and AAPG on the harassment thing. So we have some super-strong thoughts about that. So as you're working toward a panel or something about that in policing there, we'd be happy to sit down with you and be able to provide some thoughts.
I love volunteers, thanks.
All right, seeing no further discussion, I need a motion to receive the verbal representative updates as presented for information. Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Malin, any opposed? That motion is carried, thank you. So that is the end of the presentations and reports for today. We'll now invite public guests who registered to speak to do so. Our public participation process is designed to balance the desire to hear from the public with the need to keep meetings at a reasonable length. Those of you who registered to provide a presentation will have four minutes to speak, followed by Commissioners having an opportunity to ask brief clarifying questions. Those who registered to ask a question will have two minutes to speak, followed by a member of the Commission or Calgary Police Service having two minutes to respond. Please keep your comments to the topic you provided when you registered. We also cannot discuss a complaint about any specific employee or interaction with the police. If you would like to discuss a complaint against an officer or other employee, please contact our Public Complaint Director or the Calgary Police Service Professional Standards Section so that it can be properly addressed. I'd also like to thank everyone that took time to send us written submissions prior to this meeting. They've been provided to everyone on the Commission as part of the meeting materials, and we appreciate you taking the time to write to share your insights. Finally, a reminder to Members of the media that we'll hear from the public first, and then we'll hold a media availability for you following that. And if you could put through the first speaker, please.
Thank you Chair, we're just promoting them to panelists. For those who are lined up to speak, please do leave your cameras off until it is your turn to speak, at which point you are free to turn your camera on if you'd like, but that's not required. The first person that we do have lined up to speak today is Mr. Weesam Cooley, and he has a four-minute presentation on the University of Calgary encampment.
All right, thank you, thank you Chair. Good afternoon, my name is Weesam Cooley. I'm a non-practicing solicitor registered with the Law Society of England and Wales. I'm also an alumni from the University of Calgary, and for the last eight months, I've been one of the organizers of the weekly demonstrations in Calgary against the ongoing genocide in Gaza. My presentation today will be about the serious misrepresentations that Chief Mark Newfeld made to this commission at its previous meeting about the events that took place at the University of Calgary on May 9th, 2024. I was present at the student encampment at the university on that day. I'd been invited by the student organizers to support them, particularly in the role of helping to deal with police, and I was one of the main liaisons between the students and the police that night. As someone who was there, I can say categorically that the inaccuracies in Chief Newfeld's statements to the commission last month are numerous, too numerous to fully go into in the time I have here, though I'm happy to answer any questions from the commission about what I think those inaccuracies are. But for this presentation, I'll focus on just one aspect, which is this. Chief Newfeld has repeatedly stated that the reason for the actions of the Calgary Police that night was the presence of the encampment. He emphasized repeatedly, including to this commission, that the issue was not protest, nor the presence of protesters on campus, but the presence of tents and the encampment. What Newfeld failed to mention was that roughly an hour before the police launched their assault that night, the students had agreed to the police's demand that all the tents be taken down. For about an hour before that police assault, students and their supporters dismantled the entire encampment as the police watched. Every single tent in the encampment was taken down prior to the police launching their massive assault that night. And while the protesters were dismantling those tents, I personally was the liaison constantly with CPS and with one officer in particular, who I knew from the weekly protests. In fact, I discussed with that officer specifically how the police could help us get the camp materials off-site. There were a lot of materials, including supplies and personal belongings, and the police had blocked the access roads to that location, so I asked the officer to make room for us to bring a truck on-site to take the materials away. At first, the police demanded that we leave the pallets, which the students had used as barriers, because they were worried the students would bring them back to use another day. In response to that, the students agreed to leave the pallets behind. The officer then offered to have the police escort a truck on-site to help move the materials. I spoke to the students about that offer, which they accepted. But when I returned to the officer to communicate that, something had changed. I was suddenly told that the offer was being reneged, that protesters could take only whatever materials their hands could carry, and that we had minutes to leave. The officer then walked away, and when I tried to get him back after that, I was told he was no longer available and that no other officers would be speaking to us either. I then went around informing protesters of the situation, but before I even had a chance to communicate with everyone present, I heard an officer shout from behind the police line, "Time's up, Mr. Cooley", and seconds later, the police charged. And by charged, I mean they suddenly closed distance on the protesters and started bashing us with riot shields, which quickly turned into batons, munitions, people thrown to the ground, and all the other things you've seen in the videos from that night. But what I want to emphasize is that that police violence was not used to break up the encampment, the encampment was already packed up. What happened was much worse. This was an unprovoked assault on protesters who were communicating with and making concessions to police, and had already taken down all of the tents before they were suddenly and viciously attacked by officers, seemingly for no reason. So I do have a question, it's a two-part question for the Commission Chair, if that's all right. First, given that Chief Newfeld omitted these facts at the commission meeting last month, I want to ask the Chair, is the commission even aware of these facts? Is the commission aware that all the tents had been removed before the police assault that night? That the police cut off communications with protesters before they attacked? And that an officer shouted "Time's up" before the police charged? And second, if you are aware of those facts, what explanations have you been given for that violent police response being ordered after all the tents had been taken down and in the middle of ongoing communications between protesters and the police? Those are my two questions, is the commission even aware of these facts? And why was that violent police action ordered in those circumstances? If you can answer those questions today, I would appreciate it. If not, I'd like to know when we can get the answers to those questions. I appreciate you giving me the time to speak, and if you have any clarifying questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cooley. I appreciate the time you took to put that together and present that to us. We will take this information, we don't have answers to your questions today. One of the things that we are, we must wait for is the ACERT investigation. And so that information will be coming to us when they finish their investigation. Until then, we'll take all of this information and appreciate that people are willing to share what they have with us, and we'll take all that on. And when the ACERT investigation is, our review is finished, then we can come back and look at that again. So thank you very much for your comments today.
Okay Chair, our next speaker is Ewan Thompson, and he has a question related to the UFC protest.
Hi, thanks for having me here today. I'm going to be about two and a half minutes, if that's okay? Just want permission to take an extra 30, 40 seconds, if that's all right, to ask my question? Thank you. Okay, so first, I want to commend those Commissioners who approached the May 29th meeting with a critical eye to the response of Calgary Police Service toward attendees of the May 9th University of Calgary protest. Those were people showing up against the ongoing genocide of Palestinians in which this country and many of its academic institutions are implicated. In multiple public statements, Calgary Police Service has asserted that injuries were not sustained by protesters at the May 9th protest, including in a Facebook post on May 9th and at Chief Newfeld's press conference on May 10th. There, Chief Newfeld stated, quote, "There were no injuries to anybody involved in the matter", unquote. At the same press conference, Chief Newfeld implied that batons were not used by CPS. And at the May 29th Police Commission meeting, he stated that, quote, "The CPS is not aware of any batons being used on anybody", unquote. However, video captured by local media shows at least one instance of a baton used to beat somebody face down on the ground. And in a complaint received by Calgary Police Commission ahead of the May meeting, another person reported being beaten with a baton. And yet, at the one-hour, four-minute mark of the May Commission meeting, Commissioner Tangi dismissed claims of protester injuries as misinformation spread by social media, and no other Commissioner pushed back. CPS and Commission are by now in possession of multiple formal complaints from people physically and psychologically traumatized by the CPS deployment to the protest. At least two people were handed directly to EMS by Calgary Police for medical attention, while another was charged by Calgary Police after being admitted to hospital that night. I'm going to correct that, I believe at least one person was handed directly to EMS by Calgary Police, and then the other person was charged after being admitted to hospital that night. Therefore, CPS had a clear record of injuries sustained by protesters as of May 9th, well in advance of Chief Newfeld's press conference on May 10th. For my own head trauma, no ambulance was made available and no medical attention was offered at any point. The Police Service Regulation Section 52D stipulates that, quote, "Deceit consists of one or more of the following: willfully or negligently making or signing a false, misleading, or inaccurate statement or entry in an official document or record; or two, willfully or negligently making or signing a false, misleading, or inaccurate statement pertaining to the police officer's official duties", unquote. My questions are to Chief Newfeld. First, do you accept that broken bones and concussions from blunt force trauma constitute serious injury as defined by the Police Act? And second, can you describe the steps taken to verify if Calgary Police caused injuries at the May 9th protest before CPS, yourself, and a sitting Commissioner publicly asserted on May 9th, 10th, and 29th that no injuries occurred? Thanks so much for having me here, and I'll appreciate any responses.
I'll just start, and- I'll just start and put my, my comments ahead of the chiefs. I think that we appreciate your presence and certainly your accounting of this and your presence at our last meeting. We are taking all of this information in. There is a review by ACERT that is underway that will look at the critical aspects of the incidents. Until then, we don't have the information we need to make any kind of decisions. And I will also say that the role of the commission is to look at this based on police priorities and policy oversight. It is not to investigate or determine what's lawful and what's not. So that's outside of what the commission's authority is. So that, I appreciate the information that you've provided. And I will ask Chief Newfeld if he has a comment he'd like to add.
Thank you, and thank you for the question, Ewan. I guess in respect of Part A, I would say yes, I accept the definition of serious injury as you've laid it out there. And with respect to B, and I think it was around what fact-checking or whatever was done, I was speaking to what we were aware of at the time that we were speaking to it. And so I certainly stand behind what I would have said at the time that I said it. Thank you.
Okay, Chair, our next, next speaker is Ms. Lynn Robinson, and she also has a question related to the U of C protest.
Hi, thank you for allowing me this time to speak. My question is in regards to statements made by Calgary Police following the last commission meeting in regards to peaceful protesters at the University of Calgary encampment in, for Palestine. Chief Newfeld stated that all protesters who remained on campus that evening did so with the direct intent of creating altercations and, quote, "mixing it up with police officers," unquote. As someone who did remain the entire evening and did occur injury as a result of police action, neither I nor any other protesters I spoke to that evening had any desire to have any sort of physical altercation. Many who remained were actually very shocked by the sudden advancement and violence against us protesters by CPS officers. In addition, I personally was recovering from surgery. Had I expected any violence that evening, I would have immediately left in order to not incur more severe injury, let alone had I expected to cause any sort of injury to others. The Calgary Student Movement will be publishing an op-ed in the coming days detailing further inaccuracies in Chief Newfeld's claim. My question here is this: What steps will the commission take to verify claims made at and following the last meeting? And if it is found that officers lied to cover up for police brutality against non-violent student protesters, what steps will the commission take to hold those accountable? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson, for your, your comments and your information. At this time, we are listening and collecting all the conversations that we, and the information that is coming forward. We are also awaiting ACERT, as I commented, their review. So I don't, I'm not in a position to say what the result of these conversations will be. But the incident will not go away, and we will continue to seek response to all of this.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Our next speaker is Ms. Annette Langell, who also has a question related to the University of Calgary.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to ask a question today. My question concerns Chief Newfeld's report of the police action against the student protest on the U of C campus on May 9th, which he presented at last month's commission meeting. For context, I was present on campus on the night of May 9th as a U of C alum and a human rights and justice advocate to lend my support to the students who are protesting to demand the U of C disclose and divest from institutions and corporations implicated in the genocide in Gaza. I witnessed the brutality that unfolded. I was assaulted and injured by police. I filed a formal complaint prior to last month's commission meeting, which I know Chief Newfeld and the commissioner saw as it was referenced in his report and in questions regarding injuries. I reviewed Chief Newfeld's report and related questions from commissioners. As a preamble to my question, I will quote Chief Newfeld. Regarding, regarding the use of flashbangs, he, he said, quote, "No flashbangs were used," unquote. And in answer to a question about the difference between a flashbang and an OC grenade, he replied, "It was a matter of nuance." He explained that, quote, "An OC grenade is a hand-deployed device that delivers light, sound, and a small amount of synthetic version of OC spray, and the device does not make physical contact," unquote. However, it did make physical contact. One exploded beside me, and half the canister flew at my leg, injuring me. Regarding the use of batons, he said, quote, "Contrary to what has been reported repeatedly in the media, the CPS is not aware of any batons being used on anybody," unquote. A baton was used on me. I was hit in the face on my brow bone and subsequently checked in with the doctor for a concussion exam, as I reported in my complaint. Chief Newfeld, having acknowledged that a complaint had been filed and reporting that, quote, "None of the people who submitted a concern reported suffering an injury," unquote. My question is, had you already read my complaint describing my injury from being hit by a baton when you told the commission that you were unaware of injuries or of batons having been used on anybody? And if you did read my complaint, did you then publicly dismiss it as no injuries reported? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Langell. I appreciate your explanation and your questions. As I've commented earlier, we are taking all of this information in. We need to hear what the ACERT review provides. The commission is not an investigative body. We have to take the investigations that are provided by others, and we will do that along with all the comments that we've heard today. So I appreciate this information. I don't think that we can answer those questions at this time, but we'll definitely take them on and consider them as we move forward.
Okay, Chair, we have two more speakers. Angela Whitney is one, and she's not showing up in the gallery. So I just wanted to say if she is there, please do change your name just so that we can pick you out. And then the next speaker up is Mr. Ryan Kirkby, who also would like to ask a question related to the University of Calgary. Mr. Kirkby, you should be able to speak now. And he has just hung up. So, and I do not see Angela Whitney, and so I believe we are done, Chair.
Great. Thank you. And I just want to say thank you to everybody who registered to speak today and the information, the letters that we got as well. We will definitely consider all that you've said. It's recorded. We have this available to us. And we appreciate you taking the time to participate and share your thoughts with us. So thank you very much to all of you. And with that, we will move on to the media availability. So the public participation session is the end of the majority of the agenda. So we'll now adjourn the public part portion of this month's commission meeting. Thank you for everyone, including all the presenters who came. Chief Newfeld and I will move to the podium shortly, where we'll be available to answer questions from the media. Everyone is welcome to stay and watch our media availability, but only recognized members of the media will be able to participate. For commission and members of the service participating in the in-camera portion of our meeting, which is next, we'll take a break before continuing. So if you can please try and keep this room quiet until the media availability is finished. And if you're joining us remotely, please remember to rejoin us using the in-camera link, which is separate. Thanks, and then we'll move.
For those members of the media, we're just reshuffling the room. If you do have a question, please do raise your hand in Zoom, and we will call on you once we're set up. Okay, we will start with Tiffany Goodwin from City News. Tiffany, you're free to speak.
Hi, during the presentation about safe public spaces, it was mentioned about the community court, which I understand is new. Hoping someone could elaborate on that and what CPS's hope is for the new community court when it comes to making public spaces more safe.
Tiffany, our presenters who were speaking on the community court are no longer here. But what I would offer you generally, I haven't had an update on it recently, but I'm excited to think that it could be going ahead. Typically, what we see from community courts is if somebody's struggling with mental health or addictions or homelessness, and they get involved with the criminal justice system, oftentimes that's diversionary, a diversionary device, well, like a therapeutic court where people would be diverted into treatment as opposed to the criminal justice system. So I think there's all kinds of opportunities. We can provide more information into the future once we know what that might look like, but that's the general idea of them. And so I think it would have a real positive impact in the city if we could get one going.
And sorry, did it already start, or is it potentially going to start? Because I think they said it was starting, but just to confirm.
Yeah, I heard the same thing. I heard that it was operational, like just started, but I wasn't aware of that. So if you check in with media, just Mike, none is beside me here. We could get you the information you might need on community courts. Thanks.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, we have no other media with their hands up, so let's give a last call for anyone else with questions.
Oh, could I, oh.
Yep.
Can I ask another one?
Yep, go for it.
Sorry, could I just get a statement on the Calgary Stampede? And you know what people can expect in terms of policing at the Stampede and how it has evolved over the years?
Yeah, sure. So our response to the Calgary Stampede is something that's scalable and something that's very, very visible to Calgarians. As the stampede's grown, the number of resources assigned to the stampede has grown. I think it was mentioned that now stampede isn't just what goes on at Stampede Park. It actually involves all kinds of events going on across the city. And so it's, it's a big sort of nine days in Calgary here. The police will be out in full force. We start up a ninth district so that we can have resources that can be dedicated to the stampede while still maintaining our eight other operational districts for all the other things that are going on for Calgarians. So we want to have a, like a safe, inclusive, and inviting space where all Calgarians and visitors can come and have a great time at the Stampede. And there will be police officers out and about, and please engage them. They will help you in any way that you will need during your time at the Stampede.
Great.
Thank you, Tiffany. We have Karina at CBC who got in under the wire. Give me just a moment here. Yeah, she'll be able to speak now, Karina.
Hi, thanks for taking my question. I know that the presenters aren't here, but earlier a presenter mentioned that you'll be looking at specific concerts and events at Stampede and kind of adjust staffing levels to that. So I'm just wondering if you can speak to whether there are maybe certain instances in past years that kind of spurred this or examples of events that could maybe need more officers this year.
Superintendent Barr, that presenter is still here, so he can speak to it. But generally speaking, I think they will look at the scope and scale, like the size of various events, and how many people will be attending. The other thing that I think is big in terms of the planning is to what extent alcohol is in the mix and whether or not there might be problems associated with that, with crowds. But generally speaking, scope and scale, time of day, and impact on the community are considerations. Superintendent Barr, do you want to add? Nope, he says that that's sufficient. So does that help?
Yeah, that's great. Thanks.
Okay, perfect. We have no one else, so we will, we will end it there. Thank you, everyone, for joining us today.